It stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Got some well-needed rain. Hope we didn't downpour it on when you came in. Just a quick reminder, please silence your cell phones. Okay, first order of business, public announcements. Details may be found at www.fairfieldme.gov. Am I echoing?
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, there's a speaker in here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's an enhancement.
Might back up a little bit, maybe? Yeah. Okay, public announcements, details may be found at www.fairfield-me.gov. Online emergency town offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Dog licenses for 2025, 2026 are now available. You may register online or at the town office. Any dog dogs registered after January 31st, 2026, will receive a $25 late fee per dog. Proof of current rabies vaccination is required. The Fairfield Police Department will be handing out candy on Memorial Park across from the former Fairfield Primary School on High Street on October 31st from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. The police department is encouraging business owners and residents to join them in the park by setting up booths, wheelbarrows, or tables to hand out candy. For more information, please reach out to the police department directly. I know they've informed a lot of the people that have done the truck-or-treat before and invited them, so it should be a good event. Election information. Election Day is November 4th. Polls will be open at 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the community center, 61 Water Street. Absentee ballots are available at the town office. You may request a ballot in person, by phone, or online. The deadline to request a ballot is Thursday, October 30th, 2025, by 4:30 p.m. There will be late hours on Monday, October 27th, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. to allow people to register vote outside of regular business hours. Lawrence Public Library. We're putting the boo in books for this Halloween with our haunted stacks, October 29th, 30th, and 31st, after hours, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Join us for a talk with Randy Liberty on the Hometown Heroes Banner Program on November 3rd at 4:00 p.m. Community conversations on Tuesday morning at 10:30 a.m. are a chance to chat with others in the community about life, the Lawrence Bulldogs, pets, the weather, projects, hunting, just about anything, but we are hoping to leave politics outside. Join us Tuesday, November 18th, for the first chat, coffee and donuts, too. We'll be adding more programs in the coming months, so stay tuned. The library has something for everyone. Council, we should all got an email today from, from the library manager about events, again, going on at Memorial Park. Second order of business, public hearings. We have none. Third order of business, public comments. These will be limited to three minutes. Members of the public may speak to the council or request an opportunity to speak on a specific item that is on the agenda or may email comments for council to info@fairfield-me.gov by 4:00 p.m., day of the meeting. Submitted content may be read aloud at this time. Do we have any member of the public? Max?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come up and just give kudos to Alyssa and her staff, as well as the many volunteers that put on the Harvest Festival this past weekend at the library. My son Ethan and I attended, and I was blown away by the number of activities that there were for residents, as well as just the number of residents and kids that were there. It was really amazing to see something fun to do right here in Fairfield for families.
Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else, Carol? All right, we did get an email today. You should have that with your packet, from Laura Duffy. There is an event that was scheduled for the Fourth Annual Young Vendor Fair in November. We have since required that the community center renters have insurance on the building. And they weren't planning on that, so she's asking if we would waive it. You have that email in front of you. I'm not going to read it aloud, but let's put it up for discussion. My, my feeling is that we need the building covered. There, it's a for-profit entity. They're charging for tables or whatnot. I understand there's fees to rent the facility, but our liability is different for rented events, so I would like to see us continue requiring insurance for the event.
So I think we, yeah, we had talked about it last time, that that's really the situation that we have to follow. And I think there are some, she mentioned the $120 for one day, but I think we have talked about some other, you know, sources that are much cheaper that will be sufficient.
I, I know Michelle gave her another site to check, and, and again, we, we will continue to look for different ones. There's some direct sites. I mentioned progressive.com direct last week, Gavaguardis through MMA. We had an event last weekend. It was well-attended and probably a couple hundred people. It was $100. So there are cheaper venues for, for that type of insurance. So I'd like to see us continued with our policy to require insurance. So unless there's any other discussion, I think.
Well, the, the, the money at the door and at the hot chocolate stand, though, is by donation. So it's not, they're not asking everybody to pay to come in. But if we don't, I think where this is new, we should stick to our guns. And there are other places where she could get insurance. There probably wouldn't be so much.
I believe she's renting tables, so I think they've already collected income for vendors or for booths. And, and again, you know, that's, that's a for-profit entity, whether it's for a specific fundraiser or not. It, it is for profit. There are tables at the end of the day.
And it is, you know, I've been to the Young Vendor Fair. I went last year to Clinton, and it was very interesting to see what the kids have done. And kudos to them for doing that. And I appreciate what they're doing. However, safety is important, and we have to take care of our, the community center, and that's why we have insurance.
I would, I would offer to have Ms. Duffy reach out to me on behalf of the, I'm speaking on behalf of the Central Main ATV Club. We can point her in the right, right direction with getting better insurance, or we may sponsor her insurance as an ATV club. If it's for the kids, I know the email doesn't do justice. I understand with sticking the precedents, I, our precedents, I think we do need to, to stick to our guns with insurance. In this case, if she can reach out to me and the ATV club, if we can help, we will.
That's nice of you.
I would be willing to do a private donation as well. So, and I think that's the avenue we need to approach at this point, for those that have already been pre-registered, but we have the ask, so.
So if we could, yeah, get that special sponsor, because I, I've been reached out by a lot of people saying, have people try to sponsor, sponsor them to flow the insurance. We're, we're in a position, the community has helped us out, and I think it's something, you know, that we can, we can work and help this young lady out, so.
Yeah.
Info, I'm assuming Brittany got this email?
It came to a general.
Okay. Could you have or forward her information to me via my town or my town email, and then I'll get her.
Email address is right at the top of the page. We can forward it to you, but her email address is right there.
Yeah, okay.
See that?
Yeah, I see it.
Let's do that, and let's, let's send her a couple sites where they may be able to get cheaper insurance as well. And if, if we can just forward that event, the, the day and time, I, I would like to try to attend, and I may just drop off a donation as well.
I believe it's the end of November, but we can get that.
Okay. So we're good on leaving our fees as set? Okay, and I thank her for sending in the email. I know it's, it's a quick change, but it's needed, and every other venue around requires the same thing. Fourth order of business, reports from staff and committees. Town manager report.
Right. So on October 9th, the day after your last council meeting, I did email the DEP regarding well testing and potential and experiencing delays after our conversation at that meeting. I did receive a call back from them, letting me know that they currently are not expecting any delays, other than with people whose outdated, with outdated contact information. And, and I do know that they have since reached out directly to Councilor Lawrence, and, and that's great. But if residents feel they're not being tested and should be, you are encouraged to contact the DEP as soon as possible. Don't wait and, and think that there's things going on. It almost sounded like they had some old information that transferred when they did the new vendor, but I'm not sure. But she was not aware of any, but at that, at that time. But definitely reach out, don't wait. October 15th, the fire chief and I, along with the surrounding municipalities, were invited to participate at the Waterville City Council's workshop regarding their plans for a third ambulance. Overall, the conversation ended with the feeling that everybody needed to work together on these regional issues surrounding ambulance services, and that would be in everyone's best interest, and, and folks were definitely willing to continue those conversations. October 16th, I attended the KRDA General Assembly Meeting. The search for the new executive director is making progress, and plans for the solar project on lots 19 through 22 are moving forward, and the DEP permits have been approved for that project. October 20th, I attended the Central Main Growth Council's annual meeting at BRICS. Keynote speaker was Michael Dugay, Commissioner for the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development, and Lawrence High School grad. But also, that evening, which was a surprise, Fairfield's own Max Kenny was awarded the 2025 Young Professional of the Year Award. Not a surprise that he got the award, but definitely good. Max does a lot of work within our community, but also works with KB Connect, which is a spin-off of the Central Main Growth Council, so that was really great. Councilor Thibodeau, Thibodeau and I both were there to see that. October 21st, I attended KB Cox Board of Directors' meeting. Gabe Gobbin, formerly of the Central Main Growth Council, was there to provide an introduction to Maine Redevelopment Land Bank Authority. The Maine Redevelopment Land Bank Authority stabilizes and rehabilitates blighted, abandoned, environmental hazardous, and functionally obsolete properties to create economic development opportunities and the stabilization of property value. They also create vibrant, prosperous, and sustainable communities by facilitating and coordinating redevelopment in partnership with municipalities, public organizations, counties, and state agencies. That did come directly from their website, but they are relatively new authority. They were created by the legislature. They have the ability, they're working right now, for an example, with the town of Heartland and the Old Tannery Building, where they are able to go in, acquire that property, get clear title to that property, get the grants they needed to finish the brownfields cleanup because of the fact that they're quasi-municipal, and then turn around and be able to sell that property to developers easier than any municipality could. They work a lot with, like, people that are owned by ghost organizations, that kind of stuff. But municipalities, if they have long-term properties that they've owned for a long time and just not quite sure what to do with, they can assist with that. So it was a good introduction to that new program. And then also, on the 21st, I attended the Environmental Committee meeting, which Councilor Townsend will tell you about. Just for general updates, we're working on scheduling union contract negotiations. The police and public works contract expire in June of next year. And then we're also, I'm working with the fire chief with putting together an informational packet for the town council's workshop with the town of Benton. And that is scheduled for you to have a brief conversation about, under other council business, in case there's anything specific you want. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions for Michelle?
Thank you.
Busy as always again. I really appreciate the written report. It's easy to follow.
Yeah, it was a great suggestion.
Economic Development, Council Thibodeau.
On November 5th, at 3:30 here in Council Chambers, we will be having our monthly meeting. It's happening on Wednesday because November 4th is Voting Day.
Council Lawrence, Building Committee.
Okay. I received the email the other day. I guess we're going on some tours of some facilities. October 27th, Monday at 6 o'clock at Skowhegan Fire Department. Then the next day, October 28th, in Newport Fire Department. And we're going to be discussing, welcome us to be there, facility tours, show building plans, and answer any questions we may have. Then our next scheduled meeting is November 18th at 5:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers, and the public is welcome.
Thank you. Environmental, Council Townsend.
So we met last night for the committee, and we had our first order, we actually had Nathan Saunders, who is a member of the committee, kind of presented on his testimony that he gave before the state last year, working on a bill to get funding for potential water projects, at least our first phase one in Fairfield. I think the biggest thing was to look at some of his data and how it helped for a lot of people to visualize this, the, you know, immense problem that exists. And if you look at the four parts per trillion, it's kind of, you lose track what four parts per trillion is. And if we took all of the toxic PFAS accumulated that was spread, which was just about 53 pounds, which sounds like nothing, because it sounds like, you know, a sack of feed. And you take that, that would actually contaminate that four parts per trillion, the whole lake of, the whole Moosehead Lake. So, and also talked about covering, you know, the section of Fairfield.
It was all of Fairfield.
Yeah, all Fairfield with 125 feet of water would, would be what, how much the volume is, we're looking at. So it just kind of starts thinking about how much contamination there is and how it's continued. I think one of us, one of the biggest things we want to look at is, we really, I think one of our, our big focuses was the continued testing, because I think it's very dynamic. And you have somebody who tested back in 2021, and they had 19 parts per trillion, and who knows what that's at, because we talked about it ourselves, some of us who are being tested and how that fluctuates. And so if you happen to be tested at a low point during that time, you might be seen as being below the level for any kind of filtration systems, but you may now, now be significantly above. So I think that's the fact that we have to continue to push on the state to have that continued testing. We're going, going to be talking to them and getting an update on funding and seeing where that stands, and seeing where their, where their projects are. We also are going to meeting, going to be meeting with Senator Seerway and talk about the bills that are before the state and some of the funding that's available, and trying to make sure we push on that end. As, he will also bring some other legislators that he works well with and things that can push the, some of the stuff forward, some of that funding for testing. So that's one of the things we're, so there's a lot going on, a lot of moving parts. I'd be happy to have Councilor Kitchen or also Max Kenny speak if they want to about the committee, but I think that's kind of sums it up at, at the moment.
All right. I, I think it does sum it up. I would just, I would just put another plug in that we could still use some committee members. I think we have room for two more.
Correct.
And obviously, any opinion is, is a good opinion, whether we agree or disagree. We could use more help, better opinions, and, and then, you know, help with the brainstorm. And I think we're, we're heading in the right direction. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but the good thing is the standing committee now, so we'll be able to keep rolling.
Agreed.
Well, it's encouraging. We, I mean, a couple of council members on that, but also people that are affected that are on it and have a knowledge of it, to keep it on the forefront. It's an important committee for the town. It's, it's not just PFAS, it's environmental. And we're still looking for a couple members, so if you have the time, this is a great group of individuals. They've been doing it for a while. It sounds like they're staying on the state, keep that testing going. As I reiterated, a lot of those levels were tested in '21. It's been four years, so it'll be interested to see if things have changed, especially in a, in a year like this year where there's a drought. Who knows what that water table's done. So thank you all for, for your continued work on that committee, and I very look forward to hearing what's coming up in the future. But thank you for keep pressing.
You're welcome, and I'll make one quick addition. Our next meeting is November 17th at 6:00.
November 17th.
Yep.
All right, here in Council Chambers.
Here in Council Chambers.
I just want to mention to you guys, I got Sarah Smith coming to my house tomorrow, personally herself and the DEP people, going to talk about testing.
Yeah.
Also, too, they're saying probably one, once a year or two, twice a year, all the dooms too. And I found out there's more other programs there they'll offer too, that'll pay for.
And that's where we're going to be trying to expand that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, all you, for your work.
Thank you, Peter.
Ice Ring Committee, we have not met yet. Michelle, November 5th, if I'm not mistaken. 6:00 right here in Council Chambers will be our, our first meeting, organizational meeting. I'm excited to get going on that one. Dr. Townsend on that committee with me as well, so we've got a good group of individuals, and hopefully we can bring things, things to the table quickly to, to report back to council. That's it for committee reports. Fifth order of business, consent agenda. These items are considered routine or standard business, and therefore will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests prior to consideration of the portion of the agenda in which, in which event, the item will be removed and the consent agenda is considered next on the agenda. Item 25-115, order that Fairfield Town Council hereby waives the reading of and accepts the minutes for meeting 2025-18, held on October 8, 2025. Item 25-116, order that the Town Council hereby approves treasurer's warrant number 79 in the amount of $537,296.82 to include but not be limited to motor vehicle fees, MSAD 49 October allocation, main municipal property and casualty insurance, and central main power.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Council Lawrence, second by Council Townsend. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous, 5-0. Sixth order of business, old council business, website. The new website is launched, and the town clerk asks if residents find any discrepancies. To email info@fairfield-me.gov for corrections. I checked it right before I came tonight. Looks great. I'm sure we'll have some things missing, but thank you for getting that up. I, I think we're way ahead of schedule from where we had planned. We may have some bumps as we go, but information is good and it's there. I noticed we had some questions on SNAP benefits, and you've answered that on the website. So if you have questions, check the website first, and other than that, call the town office. Committee meeting recordings, nothing new yet to report.
One thing I would say, I may try to use our next environmental committee meeting as a guinea pig, so.
A guinea pig?
Yeah.
All right. What do, what do you think, and?
We're thinking, we're, we're looking at the old, either iPad or something along that line, and maybe going through the YouTube channel, but, so I'll confirm that.
Okay. Yes, Michelle?
So there was a, just to update a little bit more on that, there was a really great conversation at the environmental committee, because there have been some platforms that they've been trying out. But one of the things that had come up throughout the course of our discussion, actually in the office, I was reminded that any time a recording of any public municipal meeting is made, that recording has to be maintained by the municipality forever, unless there's a verbatim transcript of that recording. So whatever platform we use, if it generates a file, that recording file still has to be submitted to the town. So we have to make sure, there's, there's a lot of checks and balances that have to happen with an application that's used for something in-house that's going to record many minutes.
Great, thank you.
Good progress is being made, though.
Good. Seventh order of business, to take action on the following items of business. Item 25-117, order that the Town Council hereby considers applications for the Kennebec Sanitary Treatment District, KSTD, Board of Directors, to fill a vacancy with the term ending June of 2026.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Council Lawrence, second by Council Townsend. I believe we only have one applicant.
Yeah.
Correct?
Right. Christopher Gross.
Can we move forward with that one application?
Michelle has something to add.
Michelle?
You can move forward with that application. He is qualified to do it. He's a Fairfield resident. The only thing I do want to draw your attention to is that his employer is Hudamaki. So any legal action between KSTD and Hudamaki, he would not be able to represent Fairfield in those conversations. That's the only thing I just want to draw your attention to. It may or may not be conceived of a conflict of interest. Well, it definitely would be a conflict of interest if he was involved in those conversations, but anything to do with KSTD outside of that would not be. But that's, I just want to draw your attention to it. But he is the only applicant that has shown any interest in this, and we've been looking for quite some time.
Was he made aware of that?
I believe he was made aware of that.
He's certainly qualified. Do you have any concerns on, on that conflict of interest?
I don't think that I do at this point, really. We have a very good open communication with the executive director at KSTD, and I think if there's something that they felt that Fairfield needed to weigh in on, we would probably have a conversation about that. And then also, because normally this isn't, is this the elected position? This is the one that Paul Fonjambein is also running for in November to fill that vacancy. So, yeah. Is this one, or that's the water?
That's the water.
That's the water. So we have another rep that's also on KSTD already, too. We have two, so. Jack Stanley is also a rep for us on, on this board.
Okay.
So at this point.
This is Bruce's open seat?
This was Bruce's seat that he had, had resigned from, and it's effective until?
You can fill it?
2020.
2026.
2026. So that's, I mean, and that's June of 2026, right?
Yeah, we're only talking seven months.
So if it becomes an issue, you certainly have the ability to address it, and it may be worth giving it a try. You don't have anybody else that's interested at this point?
I'd like to fill it.
I, yeah, I think I would recommend filling it.
Yeah.
I think, you know, he can take responsibility to step away from conversations that.
That are conflict.
That he can't. And, and they would, you know, obviously do that on their end as well, so.
So we have a motion in a second. Can we amend that to accept Christopher Gross for that position? that position?
Oh, amend that, accept Christopher Gross for this position.
Christopher Gross.
Gross, yeah.
All right. Them floaters are killing me.
No, no, it's Christopher Cross is a musician.
Yeah. I looked at him real close, that's why.
Okay. So any discussion, any further discussion? I mean, it's going to be short-term, seven, eight months and he's definitely qualified. So. All those in favor? Unanimous, 5-0. Thank you, Christopher Gross, and sorry for messing up your name. Item 25-118, order the Town Council hereby confirms the Town Manager's appointment of David McAndrew as Fairfield firefighter, firefighter, paramedic for the Fairfield Fire Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Council Lawrence, second by Council Townsend. It's been sent to Town Manager by, by Chief Leary. It's her appointment. So I think it's.
And then the chief would be here this evening too, but he was in in the wee hours of this morning with the tragic fire that happened across the river. So he did ask to be excused and I told him I thought it was an acceptable excuse and he didn't need to come. But yes, definitely. And then so with your next item, just as a follow-up, I won't use the F word, but the department staff for the fire department, I can use that one, is complete.
Good.
We're not using the other one. It's complete.
We don't want to.
With this, your next appointment. That is.
It's good to hear. It's good news.
Yes.
All right. So we've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, 5-0. Continue that. Item 25-119, order the Town Council hereby confirms the Town Manager appointment of Amanda Duty as firefighter A-EMT for the Fairfield Fire Department. Is this the utility position?
Yes.
Yep. I need a motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Council, Tivodar, second by Council Lawrence. Any discussion?
That was Townsend. That was Townsend.
I'm sorry.
That's.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous, 5-0. Our eighth order business, council workshop and other business. There will be a joint meeting with the Town of Benton Select Board on October 29th at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. Michelle, do you want to brief anything on that?
Sue, I just would let you know the kind of information that we're putting together. It's again copies of what when the chief and I had met with just the Benton selectmen at the fire department there several months ago. Just re-updating that information, which includes call volume history, percentage of calls, all of those pieces. He's getting us the most current up to, he'll run a report the morning of that meeting. So we have the most current information. You'll receive a copy of our current inter-local agreement, a redline version of what we would suggest would be the potential change to that inter-local agreement. You'll receive a copy of what this year's invoice to Benton looks like, what this year's invoice would look like if Benton was paying at a percentage basis of all of our costs, those sort of pieces. Just so you have as much data as you possibly need to have that conversation with them. Our goal is to actually have that out to you tomorrow afternoon. So everybody has an ample opportunity to look at it, digest it. And if there's something else you feel that we need to support that information, I do know that Council Martin has been working on some data. The chief is currently reviewing that right now, making sure that some of that information is accurate about staffing and numbers and those sort of things. And we'll go from there.
Great. I look forward to that meeting.
Yeah. We could, I confirmed with their chairman last week of the date and time. So everybody hopefully will, will be here for that. It'll be a good conversation. And I believe, I've also spoken with Chad. It is a irregular meeting for us, but we're going to do all we can to try to broadcast that meeting as well. So to make sure that it's, even if it doesn't go out live, it'll be recorded and it will be able to go out at some point in time due to station lineup. But that's, that's our goal.
Great.
So to make sure that's.
Thank you for all your work on that. We can all make that next week.
Yep.
Good. It's going to be an important one. Any questions for Michelle on that or to each other before we head into that meeting? It's, I mean, it's, it's an old contract that was here before Michelle was. We found some overlaps that don't longer work that need to get worked out. And I think we've got great community partners across the river that want to work with us and we want to keep that relationship. So should be a good open meeting. Let's discuss other council business. Council Kitchen, we'll start with you.
I have a couple of things here. Hunting season's upon us. Youth season this weekend. Good luck to everybody that's out doing that. And a reminder that Dow's Quick Stop here in Fairfield is one of the only, if not few tagging stations around. So I'm sure they could use your business. Good luck to all the youth hunters this weekend and those who hunt throughout the season. Central Main ATV Club Trails are closing October 30th for the season. Road access trails to the Kennebec Valley Trail, known as Railbed, will be open until November 15th. At one of our meetings, we talked to the police chief about that and that was a date that he felt that they could support. So people will still have a couple of weeks to access the rail bed. And then the rail bed for ATV access will close. The state controls that. Usually the first grumble snow as we merge into the snowmobile season. Next thing I have is with the, the election coming up, I hope everybody takes time and exercises their American right to vote and, and takes the time and, and head to the polls. And the last thing I have, I was asked today if there was an update on the lettering of the fire chief's truck, if we've heard anything on that.
I know that it's something that he's actively working on with the designer.
Pardon me?
He's working with the designer on that design actively.
Is that a different design than what we currently have?
Yes. Yep. And, and mostly because of the fact that the color of the vehicle is different than what we currently have. Most of our current designs work on red vehicles as opposed to a black vehicle. So black lettering on a black vehicle was not going to work. And I think they were moving away from, for the, for the chief's vehicle, he was contemplating moving away from the bulldog piece that's on the side, the one that was more, what was it? It was more the junior high or elementary school bulldog logo. I think he was not going to use that. I think they were doing something else.
I know the vehicle's in operation, chief's driving it. That's all I care about. Okay, Council Tivodar.
Well, over the last few weeks, I've been working with Sarah Bickford, who's with Somerset County Emergency Management Agency. And we're getting ready to provide CERT training, which is Community Emergency Response Team Training. It's a 20-hour course. It will be taking place on the second and third Saturdays in January from 8 to 6 o'clock. And we have a snow day worked in for the, the last Saturday if we need it. But CERT, posters are coming out. So the, CERT is made up of trained volunteers who are prepared to take care of themselves, their families and their neighbors during emergencies. To become a CERT, you must undergo 20 hours of training and work under the leadership of municipal emergency management personnel. Then you just can't go and show up at something. You have to be activated. But in the training, it covers a variety of topics, which includes disaster preparedness, CERT organization, disaster medical operations, disaster psychology, fire safety and utility controls, light search and rescue operations, terrorism and CERT, as well as shelter operations. So this class is limited to a maximum of 20 people. The Town of Fairfield is sponsoring this CERT team. I would love to see membership from all of Fairfield's villages, people taking interest in it. And there's, if you want to do this, you can register at info@fairfieldmain.gov or you can call the town office and they'll take your name.
Minimum age requirement, 18?
Minimum age is 18. And we're really hoping, I'll be going over to KVCC and Colby and Thomas to see if we can get some younger people. This is lifelong training. So if you're able to take it now, it will go carry with you. And it's, once you're on a CERT team, it's, you will meet regularly afterwards. And you want to keep that momentum up and you'll be working with the fire chief with that. So it's, it's quite a program and it's something that the town actually needs. We, this community center, we want as a sheltering place, but we need to have trained people that can manage it. And this is our next step to getting us the sheltering here at the community center.
Has anybody signed up yet?
No, it's, nothing's gone out yet.
So for the 20 hours, is that going to be like in the course of a weekend? Is it going to be multiple weekends?
It's multiple weekends, Saturdays from 8 to 6 o'clock.
10 hours.
Light refreshments will be offered, but you've got to brown bag it.
Okay.
You're up to your.
You got dates already?
10th and 17th.
Second and third.
The second.
It's the 10th and 17th.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
I know it's the second and the third.
The second Saturday, the third Saturday.
Yes. Yeah. Because the first Saturday, we're doing budget meeting stuff.
The 10th and 13th.
First weekend, third weekend, last weekend is reserved as a snow day.
Right. Yeah.
One of those weekends.
So January 10th and 17th are 10-hour.
10-hour days. Yeah.
20 hours.
Yeah. And there is CPR training. The fire chief is going to be working with us on, on that. So it's quite a program.
Yeah.
And if people are interested, if you go to YouTube, you can see CERT videos there too. So.
I liken this to, I mean, I'm a lifelong resident. So, I mean, our fire department used to have a ton of volunteers. And when you mentioned each village, and we're talking in town, Center, Hinckley, Shawmet.
Laron.
Laron. You know, it's, it's an opportunity to check on your neighbors, especially those elderly neighbors, the emergency response in case of, you know, a true management that we need shelter or, or heating, cooling centers. So if you are able to do this, this is a great opportunity for community service where we, we're taking care of our own. You're taking care of your neighbors. You're taking care of your town. So I think it's a great opportunity, great program.
And, and the minimum is five people.
Okay.
So, but the max will be 20. And it's being opened up to the Fairfield area. So.
If you're able to, please, please sign up, go online. More information, you can always reach out to one of the counselors or the town office as well.
Yeah. And I did want to remind people of what's happening with the library as Halloween approaches and with the police department on the 31st and the, the Boo Stacks. So remember that. And also dam removal. The paper had an article today and there's been, the representative from Skowhegan has been on the news and really pushing the fact that if the dams are removed, what's that going to do with the PFAS? And I thought of you guys on the environmental committee. But I'm hoping that in the future, we'll be able to sit down and talk with interested parties. The article in today's paper had six different entities mentioned. So there was Brookfield, the Nature Conservancy, DEP, the Department of Marine Resources, oh, I forgot the name. There's another one, Main Interest One, and the governor's office. And I just feel like, you know, they're, they're all saying stuff, but the people in the municipalities don't have a say. So I'm hoping something's going to happen so that we can all hear the news together and know what.
I know they've, they've reached out to Michelle. I'm sure we'll have meetings that they will, they will talk to her. I think it's important for us to not panic. This is going to be something that takes time, even, even if the sale does go through. I know they, it's not completely gone through because they're $30 million short of, of the sale. Those are the only things I really know, but I've gotten, I don't want to get in panic mode for us. Has a huge economic impact for our town financially as, as taxes. The dams do produce energy. They do make money. The town heavily relies on it. Our sewer district will definitely rely on it. We will have a lot of things that we'll have to discuss, but I think it's taking notes, sitting back, being patient, do our due diligence to make sure we are in the know, ask the right questions. But I just don't want us to be in panic mode at this point until all, like you just said, now there's six different entities. So there's people going on. There's, it's political season. It could be a change at the state level.
We don't know.
So I think we just, we got to trust the information that will come in. I'm sure our town manager, when they have those meetings, will direct us. Our, our environmental committee will be there as well. Again, the economic impact. So a budget committee needs to be informed. There's a lot of factors that will come into it, but we're way early in the game. So Michelle?
And just to give you a quick little update, it'll more than likely be in my month, in my report for your next meeting. But just things so that you know that we are still actively working on this. One, I have a meeting scheduled with SAPI next week. They have actually reached out to have that conversation. We've coordinated a time to do that. I know that the Nature Conservancy folks have a, that informational brochure that I had mentioned that they were hoping to put out. I believe that's supposed to be delivered by the end of this week. So we'll have hard copies of that in our office. So it'll give people the ability of who they need to contact. They've also sent an electronic version that should be up on our website by the end of the week. So we'll have that in there. And then I know that our other partners, Central Main Growth Council potentially, KVCOG potentially, will be looking, working on hopefully creating a meeting in which it's all the municipalities together in one room. We're collectively talking about it and making sure that we're all receiving the same information at the same time. We envision this being a process similar to when, I don't know if any of you recall, when Summit Natural Gas came into the region, there was a very large effort to ensure that all the municipalities were on the same page at the same time. And we're thinking that it will be a very similar process to that. But it will take a while. There was also another article that was in the paper in which Brookfield has withdrawn its permit application process, which was its last step to get its FERC approval. And they've redrawn that license from the state of Maine, which means they will not get their license renewed. So people need to understand exactly what that means. Still, that does not mean the dam comes out tomorrow. It is still a very long process and you can't just take a dam out. You still need DEP approval even for that removal process. So a lot more to come, but definitely try, you know, don't panic. And we're still working towards that. And everybody continues to say, even the Nature Conservancy, that the survival of SAPI is their top priority.
Good. How many other towns is this affecting?
They're currently.
Waterville, Benton, Skowhegan.
So it, it would be Waterville because Waterville has the Lockwood Dam plus half of Kennebec Hydro. Winslow has the other half of Kennebec Hydro. Fairfield and Benton share the Shawmet Dam. Clinton has some minor infrastructure along the edge of river that belongs to Brookfield. We think it's some sort of switching station. However, they're directly affected because of the impoundment area being in, you know, a portion of it being in Clinton. And now does it affect the banks? Of course, the town of Skowhegan. And then they've also included the town of Norwich Walk because the Kennebec there will, will have a substantial change. So right now, that's where it is. There was an argument made yesterday that maybe the town of Madison also should be involved in those conversations. But that's where we're at right now is, is those seven municipalities. Is that right? Two, four, six?
Thank you. Good conversation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Dr. Townsend?
So, yes. So first thing is like, again, the dam removal, I think it's great from Counselor Tivodar. I think it is maybe a long way off, but I think it's going to be proactive. So I appreciate the, keeping that at the forefront. Hearing about the Maine redevelopment land bank is very interesting to me. So I think that's something else to follow up on in, in the future. I will say the same thing that has been said already, but let's enjoy Halloween. Let's do it safely. There is the, all the activities going on at Memorial Park between, on the 31st, 5 to 7:30. And then get out and do your, you know, good deed as a, as a citizen and get out and vote on November 4th.
Council Lawrence?
Okay. I just want to echo the two other councils, but November 4th, get out and vote. Also too, before our next council meeting, I would like to wish all my veterans, brothers and sisters, happy Veterans Day. That's November 11th. On October 15th, I attended the county commissioners Spirit America Award. On October 15th, I attended the County Commissioners' Spirit of America Award Ceremony. I accepted the award for the Grange, Victor Grange, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations again on the Grange.
I'll be sent to that, to the Grange at the next meet, meeting, so.
Fantastic. Okay, I just got a quick, quick few reminders. Parking on West Street. I know a lot of warnings have been given out in the last month and a half. Those are going to cease, they are going to be tickets now, so I believe rivalry football game Friday night, Miss Huloski Lawrence, please do not park on West Street, either side of the road, you will be ticketed. I don't know, you may be towed. Michelle, can you elaborate on that, or are there just going to be tickets?
I can't remember how that wording worked. I wouldn't dare say that at this point, but assume you'll be towed. No, I'm just kidding.
Certainly going to be ticketed, it has been a problem, so.
So I left to go to another meeting over in Waterville a couple weeks ago, oh, that meeting that we met with the Waterville City Council, and I went out that way, and there were 13 cars parked in front of all of the signs that say, "No parking here to corner." One of them within feet of, one of them directly in front of, "No parking here to corner." And the police department informed me that they know that they've given out probably 60 to 70 warnings. The first game, second game, they did cones and barricades, and it's not deterring anyone, so. And that's why the decision is, tickets at this point, and nobody wants to have to do that, but at this point, it's probably going to be the only deterrent that will work. So we'll give out a couple tickets and maybe the people will stop.
So again, it's just another warning, it's our ordinance, we, we've changed the parking for safety reasons, so please obey the rules. There are, I've been down myself, there are adequate parking signs, or no parking signs, I should say, everywhere, so again, just a fair warning. I'm going to mention Halloween, again, we got a lot going on at Memorial Park, but even elsewhere, if you're out with your kids, just be careful, it's getting dark early now. The kids are excited, they're going to be running, you've got a lot of dark costumes, they may not have reflective. Just be over cautious when you're driving. I hate to have some tragedy because we weren't paying attention or driving too fast in, in an area where we know there's a lot of children, so have fun and be safe on Halloween. Also want to mention, it's getting cold. As an insurance agent, clean your woodstoves, get those chimneys cleaned, and, and please be safe. I know times getting tough for a lot of people, so they'll be working hard on, on those, so again, please be safe. One last thing, something I've done, I started with this, with this, when I was on the school board, this will be the seventh annual Brady Martin Memorial Thanksgiving Food Drive that I've done for the school. We collect donations, monetary donations, and hand out $25 gift cards to the schools. I work hand-in-hand with the guidance councils of all the schools from MNC49, so we'll compass all the towns from Albion, Benton, Clinton, and Fairfield. Typically, we do between 100 and 150 gift cards per year. We used to do food baskets. I no longer have the freezer space, so we've gone to gift cards, which seem to, to work well. Hearing that SNAP benefits may be with health next month, I'm, I'm very weary of the demand we're going to have, but if you are willing and you want to help, please reach out to me personally, I can get you my Venmo or account where that goes. I have a private memorial fund at a local credit union that I've used, this is our seventh year. It's named after my nephew, he died in a logging accident six years ago, and Thanksgiving was his favorite holiday, so we've done that to honor his memory, so if you would like to help out, I'd be very grateful. It goes to a great cause. I also will get calls from the town office once in a while, people will see that I posted on Facebook about that. Fairfield Police sometimes will, will reach out, and we've done some extra donations outside as well. Contact your food pantry. As things get tight, we, we give 10 grand as a town of Fairfield to Fairfield Interfaith Food Pantry. I know that the Central Main ATV Club makes good donations to them as well. It just might be a tough holiday season, so if you're able to help, I'm very grateful and much appreciated. That's all I have for, for tonight. On our next regular meeting for the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, November 12th, 2021.
That's not wrong, it's 19.
19th.
Sorry.
19th, yeah. Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, to be held as a hybrid meeting in council chambers and via Zoom at 6:30 PM. Recession at this time, council recess, assign all documents, it requires signature for council members.
Make a motion, recess?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Lawrence, second by Councilor Tivido. We will recess at 7:18.